Computer issue. Um, he said he was re-
Said we're ready.
Okay, are we on?
No, we're not on. He just said he's ready when you're ready.
He's ready, okay. Welcome, welcome, Mr. Howard. I see you on there too. Thanks for being here. All right, Anita, uh, we will be ready to go whenever we get the thumbs up or the chat. Please go ahead. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this special meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education. I would like to call this meeting to order. Just a reminder, uh, being that this is a Zoom meeting, uh, we will be doing vote by roll call. And if you have a comment, uh, please make sure that you, um, raise your hand. I will do my best to look up and down, um, the line here. To make sure that I'm getting everyone, uh, but let's make sure not to talk over each other. Uh, so let's start. Ms. Bowie, if you could please call the roll.
Good afternoon. Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Bullier?
Here.
Ms. Justice?
Here.
Ms. Craybill?
Here.
Mr. McManus?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Here.
And Mr. Wildabore?
Present.
All right, we have a quorum established for this evening's meeting, uh, so we will move ahead with the next agenda item, which is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Bullier.
Thank you, Mr. Bullier. Is there a second?
Pete Wildabore.
Thank you, Mr. Wildabore. Uh, any discussion? Ms. Bowie, if you could please call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Craybill?
Aye.
Mr. McManus?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildabore?
Aye.
Thank you. Agenda is approved, seven two zero. Uh, the only item that we have on the agenda this evening is under old business. And it is the state required vote regarding masks in schools. Um, as you know, we have all heard from our community a lot this week about this item. And, uh, I, we are lucky to have, uh, Ms. David Howard here, uh, and Carla Turner from the Health Department. Uh, so I would like to start with them. Um, as we know, the Health and Human Services Board voted to lift the countywide mask mandate on Friday in a vote of twelve to eight, or excuse me, eight to four. Um, and so, uh, I would turn it over to you. Um, Mr. Howard, are you gonna take it for us?
You there?
There. And we appreciate you being here, sir. We know that, you know, Monday evening is, uh, always, it can be tough to get here. So we appreciate you taking the time to share some information about where the county is and just your insights on what we're looking at as we make our decisions for the school system.
So I can share a couple of metrics and then we'll talk about the Health and Human Services Board, if you'd like, uh, and their vote and decision process and, uh, and discussion items from Friday. Um, so the positivity rate for the county is down to 2.5%. And I just looked at the, uh, cases per day, which is the other main metric that the board was watching, uh, since they enacted the rule back in August, which was cases per day. That works out to be 15 cases per day right now. Uh, that was as high as, uh, 200 and some during the, the peak of the peak, uh, you might say. Uh, so that metric is excellent. Um, I'd like to take this moment to congratulate the community and the school system for doing an excellent job in driving these numbers down. That was the intent all along, uh, with the rule, uh, to basically intervene in the, in the process of the, of the, uh, rapid rise of cases and impacts on community, impacts on the schools, impact on the healthcare system. Um, and mitigate, uh, all the risk of, uh, of, um, services being impacted, both from healthcare and as well as education and then elsewhere. The, the meeting, uh, Friday was excellent, excellent discussion. Uh, as you mentioned, the vote was eight to four. The, um, some of the mitigating factors around some of the discussion was around, um, you know, the possibility of seeing another surge in cases, more impacts on the community and in our day-to-day, um, uh, operations, um, over the holidays. We saw that last year. Uh, the very difficult part there is we're not in the same world as we were last year. Last year, we were just beginning vaccination, um, right literally, you know, almost on Christmas Day. Uh, this year, we have close to 60% of the population fully vaccinated. And, uh, that includes all the children. So we just started a week or so ago, the five to 11th, uh, age group in terms of eligibility. Uh, so what that means is 18 and above were at 70% or so vaccinated. And what that means is the population who is eligible to be vaccinated has responded pretty well. Um, the 12 and up is, is just, uh, just below that, uh, in terms of percentages. We would like to see that higher, I think, at this point, and, and upon the HHS Board's instruction to us, the staff, uh, we will be, um, communicating as much as possible around, uh, continuing the vaccination uptake across the population, including the five to 11 age group. And we're gonna work with you as much as possible on that effort, uh, in making that available, uh, to all the parents who wanna take advantage of that, parents and guardians. As well as encouraging the rest of the population, employers, uh, and messaging around that mitigation measure, that because that's the strongest mitigation measure we have. In reality, uh, face coverings, uh, or a tool to slow down and control transmission in, in order to slow down the impacts, healthcare system, employers, school systems, your ability to operate, uh, having people out, uh, absent, uh, due to illness or, or quarantine. So those were the only, um, caveats to the meeting. Uh, the vote went, uh, made for to repeal the rule, uh, effective immediately. So Friday, uh, what we'll be doing, including tomorrow morning, as a matter of fact, at their regular meeting, is informing the board continuously of what the metrics are looking like. And what we try to do is look at leading indicators, uh, the, the hospital numbers, the healthcare system, that's a lagging indicator, right? Uh, we don't see those hospitalizations until two, three, four weeks after cases start to rise. So we're gonna keep an eye on cases. We're gonna keep an eye on testing, uh, percent positive from testing. We're gonna keep an eye on surrounding counties and surrounding states. As we know, some states are having some increases again in the northeast and in the western portions of the country. Uh, but we also look at, um, trends, right? Certain states, certain areas will be on a different, uh, point in the trend line than we were. Um, so we may have peaked, uh, after some parts of the country and sooner than other parts of the country with the Delta variant, for instance. Uh, we're hopeful that the majority of the population, the vast majority is either vaccinated and protected from serious illness, uh, including now the eligibility for five to 11 age, age of children, and also, um, enough people have some natural immunity, uh, from the Delta variant, uh, sweeping through our population so quickly. Uh, the Delta variant, uh, the good and bad is that it goes through so fast, it, it's like a wildfire. Um, that enable that peak to come down as fast as it went up. Uh, New Hanover County, with the rule we put in place, came down faster than our surrounding counties and most counties in the state. And that was designed to basically accelerate our, our, um, decrease in cases in percent positive faster, as fast as possible, basically pedaling downhill, uh, if at all possible. Um, to get our, us to this point to where we could get back to somewhat normal before the holidays. And we'll also be, um, very strong in our messaging to everyone to continue using these prevention measures, especially in public places, indoors, where it's relatively easy to use a face covering, even though nobody's making people do it. So grocery store, movie theater, uh, retail shopping, uh, where it's not necessary for you to, to not have a face covering on, to engage in an activity like eating at a restaurant. That will help decrease and, as I mentioned, I hold a, a certain level of mitigation and prevention on the transmission of the virus to folks out there who were especially, uh, highly vulnerable to, to serious illness. That's really our biggest risk, uh, while we're trying to keep people from becoming seriously, yeah, seriously ill. We're also going to work the best we can to make sure the entire community, including families, uh, that you serve, have equal access to the treatments available to people who catch COVID-19. So the monoclonal antibodies, uh, Merck and Pfizer both have an antiviral medication of, you know, tablet or a capsule form coming out soon. Merck will probably be approved before Thanksgiving or Christmas. Uh, those are all measures that medical community has in the toolbox coming soon to mitigate any serious illness as well. So you catch, uh, a diagnosis within five days of symptoms and, uh, deliver that medication, then the numbers are excellent. Uh, 80, 90% uh, prevention of serious illness, uh, even when the person's at high risk, uh, due to underlying health conditions and that kind of. So all of those things coming together, we'll be working in the community to make sure uninsured in those, those types of communities, um, have access to these treatments. Uh, and as that supply increases, we'll be in better and better shape through the holidays and into the next year. And I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, all right. Uh, thank you very much for that, Mr. Howard. Uh, are there any board members, since I can see all of you right now? Um, if you have a question, can you put up a hand? I see Ms. Justice, we'll start with you. And, uh, if anyone else has a question, just put the hand emoji up, please, um, in your window. Mr. Wildabore, I see you'll get next.
Okay.
You're on mute, Ms. Justice.
Sorry, I had barking dogs and children. Um, what is the state metric? You said we're 2.5 locally. What is the state metric?
What is their number right now?
Yeah.
Statewide, um, let's see. Oh, God, I'm looking at the website right now. So the statewide number is 6.2.
Oh, so it's considerably larger than ours.
Yeah.
Okay, can I ask one more question before somebody else and then I'll leave it at everybody else? Um, you made the statement that you said that one of the reasons that our numbers came down so fast is because we were one of the places, unlike our surrounding counties, that had the mandate for the mask. Is that correct, what you said?
So we were, we, I, I believe that we decreased our case rate and percent positive and, and, uh, in our metrics faster because we were using face coverings as a, a general rule across New Hanover County. Whereas in other counties, uh, that came down just as fast, like in Orange, Durham, um, they also had, uh, pretty much countywide face covering mandates, but they were implemented by elected bodies, typically by the city and the county in combination. Other counties who did not put that kind of thing in place, uh, had a little more trouble, um, decreasing their numbers as fast.
But it sounds like there's, the face covering is, is effective and the data shows.
They are. Uh, no one tool in our toolbox is, is perfect, it means, but it certainly does help to layer them and, and combine them, uh, in, in our, in the effort to, uh, maintain a controllable pace of, of this, of this virus transmitting across the community.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Wildabore and then Ms. Craybill.
All right. So again, now, Mr. Howard, thank you so much for being here today. I did have a couple of questions. What metrics or what, what, uh, data are you using to say that the masks are so effective? Uh, I've seen at least six studies that say that, uh, the, the mask itself is, uh, at best 20% effective, that the, uh, you know, the, uh, N95 mask is the only one that's really effective. Um, and of course, that has to be fit, as Ms. Craybill has mentioned several times. Um, so where are you getting the data that says that, uh, a cloth mask is, is a, a big, uh, a big change or a big factor here? And I do have a follow-up question since Ms. Justice had one.
Right, so all the studies are typically either a comparison study, uh, who we've looked at those, CDC's looked at those, and state public health has looked at those as well. The reality is the N95 is effective and that's the only mask that it should be used in a healthier setting. Uh, the, a cloth face covering where there's one, two, three layers, um, mitigate some. So if it's 20, 25, 35% effective in reducing, uh, the, the viral, um, transmission into the airstream. As I mentioned, that's one layer of prevention, one layer of mitigation in combination with some of the other things we've, uh, asked the public to do. Just distancing, um, doing, uh, uh, remote working, uh, avoiding, uh, large public venues where you're with people who, um, you're not normally with, all those kinds of measures layer on top of each other. Uh, so the, um, the evidence is there that they have some effectiveness. So that layered with other things is the strategy. Uh, and it's not, and it's just not practical to
Okay.
Buy N95s to everyone in the population. Of course, they're effective. Of course, we have a lot of fit testing here with our staff, uh, our clinical staff, to be prepared to respond to, uh, certain emergencies. So we're, uh, well aware of, uh, actually, the, you know, the fit testing involves probably 10 different types of mask, uh, that, because the, the mask has to fit the person properly.
Absolutely, and I do appreciate that. The other question I had, the follow-up question, uh, have you, uh, discussed this at all with Pender County? Or I know Pender's been, um, their school system has been open, uh, to, uh, the choice, uh, for, for, you know, about a month now. Uh, or actually maybe a little over a month. And Brunswick also has voted to, uh, give, give parents the choice, you know, not, not mandate, but to give parents choice. Have you talked to either of those health departments about their, their thoughts on it? And, uh, I, like I say, I spoke to a, a member of the Board of Education, Pender, and he said they have had ve- very small numbers of, of problems.
Well, that's good to hear. I have communicated with the health directors over there, Pender and Brunswick, and we've discussed, uh, the option. As a matter of fact, we compare notes, especially for those counties who have gone option, um, a little sooner than, than us. Um, looking to see if there's been a spike, uh, somewhat of a, of a, of a rise. But again, a, a rise is not going to cause, uh, knee, knee jerk reaction and shouldn't, uh, a trend, uh, that is looking very steep, as we saw back in August, is what, uh, is what causes us concern. It starts to overwhelm the ability to serve those who really need it the most, those who are, are gonna suffer from serious illness. So as long as that, that any rise we might see is controllable and, and not too drastic, um, that's fine. Talk with them. They're seeing a, a few more numbers, but, uh, nothing severe yet.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, Ms. Craybill, then Mr. Bullier, then Ms. Walker.
Uh, thank you. Um, so, um, Mr. Howard, I had a question about, um, quarantining. The, um, will, will any of the quarantining requirements change? Like if we were to have a student, um, or a staff member, you know, test positive or exposed to somebody positive, would the, oh, God, I gotta fly my house. I'm sorry. Uh, I feel like a dog giggling. The, um, would we, um, have to quarantine differently? Um, or would we have to, um, uh, yeah, just that.
Hey, Ms. Craybill, this is Carla. I'll take, I'll be happy to take that. I just had this conversation with Susan Brown about 20 minutes ago. Thank you. Um, her strong schools, you know, strong schools says that if, if the person is positive and the person exposed were both masking consistently, they would not have to quar- the, the exposed child would not have to quarantine if they're asymptomatic. So obviously, that's gonna change if there's not masks. Um, if, if the exposed child was within the distance, um, and obviously there wasn't a mask on, then that child would be required to quarantine. Uh, we are using the seven-day quarantine. Now granted, if that child's about fully vaccinated, um, if that child's fully vaccinated and asymptomatic, they wouldn't have to quarantine. But honestly, uh, the strong schools, strong schools toolkit is still going to apply. The caveat is that without the masks, you don't have the piece that if both people are consistently masked, that the exposed doesn't have to quarantine. So that is what would change as far as potential quarantining numbers.
Okay, um, I'm gonna follow suit with Ms. Justice and Mr. Wildabore and do a follow-up question real quick. So, um, if we are mass optional and teachers are not, um, going to be keeping track, I, I don't, I don't recommend that teachers have to keep track of which kids had a mask on, you know, Tuesday and which kid had a mask on Wednesday, when we might have exposure on Wednesday. Um, and then so how would, you know, how is that manageable for that? And, and would, would we then have to ask students, parents, teachers, um, about their vaccination status in order to, um, in order to determine the quarantine requirements?
If a, if a student was, had been determined to be exposed, then our contact tracers would ask that question.
Okay.
We would call, we would call the exposed student and we would ask the parent, obviously, if the child was fully vaccinated. If the answer was yes, and the child was asymptomatic, so no symptoms, then they would not have to quarantine. But yes, the same, it would, we said, what we already do with our contact trace is just another layer now that the five to 11-year-olds are starting to get vaccinated.
Okay, and, okay, so the, um, it, teachers wouldn't have to be, or, or administrators in the building wouldn't have to keep track of which kids had masks on and which kids didn't?
I would say that would have to be a question for your administration and the school system, determine how they're gonna do that. We do not expect those staff members to be contact tracers. They're not the ones calling parents. Our folks are. They just give us the names of the exposed, but they're gonna be the ones, obviously, with the best chance of having the knowledge of who was masked and who was unmasked.
Okay, great. Thank you, Carla. I appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Bullier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Howard, you mentioned, uh, an eight-four vote. And regardless of any action that the board ultimately takes, I think it's really important, um, to set or to create some sort of off-ramp. Um, you know, we've heard metrics for a number of months, about 5%, under 5% metrics that a number of our constituents feel have been met. Can you speak at all to the opposition vote? What else were they looking to see before we could go ahead and unmask? Um, or was it just a matter of being extra precautious?
Uh, the, most of the, um, the hesitation was really around the holidays and what we might see over the next six weeks, uh, going through New Year's Day. And the, uh, the natural phenomenon of people not normally living together, traveling and getting together, um, providing more opportunity for transmission of the virus. Uh, and eventually, a few weeks later, resulting in more cases, uh, and by, um, by the odds, creating more hospitalizations and more impact on the, on the healthcare system, um, which is kind of trying to recover, right? From, from the surge they had, the staffing impacts, both from morale and otherwise. Um, the, the metrics, uh, like I said earlier, will continue to provide the, uh, the metrics to the board, both the ones we've discussed. But, uh, you know, the 5% was set, uh, very early on by Dr. Cohen as sort of a, a benchmark to try to keep us under. And what she was doing there, i- i- if we all remember the, the phrase flatten the curve, right? We were trying to maintain a steady pace that was controllable, that was, um, manageable by the healthcare system, by public health, by the community, by employers, school systems. Um, only then can you work your way through a pandemic. And that's really all we've really done since March, April of 20. Uh, very early on, we realized we weren't going to eliminate this. So then it became a management thing. Um, so we agreed, uh, that at the meeting on Friday, that if that percent positive starts to rise, if the cases start to rise, um, if, um, if it begins to rise around us as well in other counties and across the state and across the region, uh, and that starts to look like a trend, uh, we will alert the HHS Board of that. And, uh, and it's up to them to consider those metrics in, in other metrics, you know, what's the vaccination rate doing? What is the, are there any other variants out there on the way from another continent, as we saw with the Delta coming over from Earth? All those factors play into the, into the calculation as well. Uh, that's why they're, unfortunately, they're not able to choose two or three metrics and make a hard trigger point. But certainly if our, uh, percent positive from New Hanover County goes back to five, uh, quickly, that's a concern. Uh, because that means whoever is getting, getting tested, uh, is turning a positive. Uh, the other caveat is, uh, the, the denominator from these metrics is, um, is a factor. So all the people getting tested, what does that look like right now? All of the cases? Uh, if someone is symptomatic and ill, or are they just staying out of work and not getting tested? We don't have absolute clarity on all of that data right now. And, uh, so we're, uh, looking at lots of different metrics and watching things that might be indicators that aren't really true numbers, such as absenteeism, if we hear about that, if we hear about fatigue and, and the hospital system, uh, we're gonna factor that in. Uh, the, the staffing, um, issues within healthcare and across healthcare, testing supplies. If, if that starts to drop down, if the retail pharmacies start to get out of that business, that causes a problem. Then we know not, not enough, uh, people are getting tested that should be tested perhaps. Or low-income uninsured, uh, communities not getting tested because, uh, they're not, um, they don't feel it's worth it to get, uh, to get to a test. All of those factors play into it as well.
Thank you very much.
Do you wanna do a follow-up to Mr. Bullier, since we've been consistent with that so far? Or are you good?
I'm good. They, you got, they have a great web, they have a great website.
Yes. All right, Ms. Walker.
Thank you. Um, I, my question is, um, is about the vaccines for the five to 11-year-olds. Um, do you have any indication, I know that just started about a week ago, and follow-up vaccines are three weeks after that. Do you have any indication of, um, maybe demand and, and how that's gonna go? And, and really, it looks like mid-December to late December are when those vaccines will be, be rolled out pretty much, or pretty well for the population. Do you have any idea of what we're looking at for that?
Carla, do you remember the number? It was 400 and some that we've done so far?
It was, I, uh, forgive me, it was either 438 or 483 that we did through five o'clock on Friday. And now that, and keep in mind, that's the five to 11-year-olds, but just the ones that we have done through Health and Human Services, through our mall site and our general clinic at our HHS building. Um, David looked on the website earlier today. It looks like there are about 19 various places in New Hanover County where the five to 11 range can, can go to receive their vaccine. I know that Wilmington Health Associates, as well as Novant, NHRMC, we're having Saturday clinics for the five to 11 range this past Saturday, as well as this coming Saturday. So they've made that available on the weekends and we're available during the week. So, um, I think it's been a very steady demand, if that makes any sense, Ms. Walker. It's been, it's been real steady. We've not been overwhelmed. Obviously, our mall clinic gets real busy after three o'clock, um, because everybody's out of school. But we are able to handle that, handle that surge each Tuesday and Thursday pretty easily. So we've seen, uh, we've seen a decent demand is what I would say from our, um, view.
So that, 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 well, I guess what I'm, yeah, the rollout is, you get your first and then you get, three weeks later is when you get the second. So if people were already beginning and they're starting to do it, you're looking at maybe mid-December to late before everyone gets their second dose. Does that make?
Yeah, probably around the beginning of, the beginning to mid-December. I think that's a fair assessment. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Um, and I guess I had a question, one more question about, um, you know, I know this is our second kind of cold season into, uh, COVID, where, you know, you know, the borders are open now and everybody's getting together for, for the holidays. When do you normally see a, a surge after that, the indicator of, you know, I guess, spread once that happens? Is that usually like a couple of weeks of a lag time?
Yeah, for the
It's about, about, about five to seven to 10 days after exposure. Um, yeah, two to five days after exposure from COVID is when you start getting, if you're gonna be symptomatic, that you, you start showing symptoms. But it can take up to 10 to 14 days before you're symptomatic. So, but usually about a week to 10 days after, um, exposure is when we are starting to see a rise in numbers.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I believe, let's see, I, Mr. Wildabore, I see your hand, but let's go to Mr. McManus first, because he hasn't asked a question yet. And then we'll circle back around to Mr. Wildabore. Ms. Craybill, is your hand still up for another question, or is that just leftover?
I was gonna ask you the same thing. Is it still up? Because it's, it's not still up. I'll, I'll go, unraise my hand.
All right, so Mr. McManus and then Mr. Wildabore.
Thank you. A couple of clarifications, if you would, Carla. Um, you said you would call the parents directly if they were vaccinated, that they'd say yes, that they would not have to be quarantined. Do they have to show proof of that vaccination, or all they have to do is say they were vaccinated?
Um, we, we do not have the capacity to look all that up, Mr. McManus. We are gonna put our faith in people being honest and, and telling us the truth. So yes, we would ask them that, if they say yes, we would, um, take that as their answer. Just like when we call, in, in general, when we call and do contact tracing, and we ask people who they've been, who they've exposed, we have to rely on them being very honest with the, with that answer. And that's not the greatest answer to give you, but it's the truth.
Well, no, no, I appreciate the correct answer. Um, is it two weeks between shots for five to 11, or is it three weeks?
It's at least 21 days, so at least three weeks, just, just like the adults for Pfizer. Yes, sir.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, back to Mr. Wildabore.
All right, let me unmute here. Uh, first,
All right, let me unmute here. First, my personal physician has told me that after the first shot, you are about forty percent. It's forty percent effective or forty percent inoculated. Is that, is that, is that the numbers, the metrics you guys are using?
For adults, or?
Well, he just made the general comment that forty percent, that after the first shot, it's forty percent, and then after the second shot, it rises up to eighty-five to ninety percent.
Yeah, we rely on the metrics from the FDA and manufacturers. So if that's what you're pulling that from, that's what we would go with.
Okay, and speaking of metrics, what are the current numbers of students, or, you know, in this range, we're talking about the five to 11 that are infected? And how about death rates in North Carolina for that age group?
Affected, you mean vaccinated or?
Well, they're just getting vaccinated now, so I'm just saying in general, what, you know, how many children are currently infected? Maybe in New Hanover County, we don't need all of North Carolina. And then how many fatalities, unfortunately?
I can speak, sorry, David.
You go ahead.
I was going to say, as far as fatalities in New Hanover County, we've had none of the, no one five to 11. We have no deaths in that age range.
Good.
And I will say, as far, again, when I was talking with Susan Brown, our school health supervisor, earlier today, I asked her, wanted to confirm how many positives you had in the school system last week. You had seven positives, and so that's spread out over all the schools, and I don't have it in front of me. I guess, well, actually, your dashboard, I guess, would show that. So you had seven positives in the schools in the last week. So, and countywide, we only had sixty-one positives last week. So, yeah, we're very encouraged with those numbers. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, are there any other questions from board members? Ms. Crable, I see the hand, I'm sorry, let's go to Ms. Justice, and then Ms. Crable. Did you put your hand back up again, too? All right, so let's go to Ms. Justice, and then again to Ms. Crable, please.
You're muted.
My dog was barking, and whoever's dog was barking. Yeah, okay. So you said that the, I guess it's eleven to eighteen-year-olds, vaccination rates were lower than the adults. What percentage was that? You didn't give it?
Take a minute to look that up for you.
I thought you said sixty percent fully vaxxed for all ages, and of those eligible eighteen and over, it was seventy percent.
Just trying to get for the specific eleven to eighteen.
So it'll be twelve and up, which is the
Twelve and up, yeah.
So what I'm going to give you is the vaccination rates for twelve and up, fully vaccinated, because we're tracking partially, which is one dose, or we're fully vaccinated. So it's sixty-seven percent fully vaccinated and seventy-one percent partially, at least one dose vaccinated. And that is everyone twelve and up.
That's everyone. That's not twelve to eighteen. You don't have that broken down.
I'm sorry, I don't have that. I would have to back into that by using two different figures. What I was referring to earlier was the total population versus the cutoffs at twelve and eighteen and up.
We don't really have those figures without you going into, I guess, a lot. Okay.
Sorry.
Also, you know, it's great that the numbers are dropping, and would you, you know, I'm just going to make an, ask you a general question. Would you say that's one of the main reasons, would be because the masking is going on so consistently in the schools, that our numbers have gone down to? Would you say, I mean, from your professional opinion?
In terms of the vaccination contributing to the
Now I'm talking about the mask, that our numbers have gotten so down to, I think you said, five students last week? Would you say that that would be an observation that's accurate?
I believe so, absolutely, yes. Again, that those masks being worn, in addition to the teachers and parents and community getting vaccinated, is just less and less of a chance of transmission within the, within the schools. So, yes, that's what, it helps.
Thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Crable.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up to when you had mentioned to us that there were seven positive cases last week, and I I haven't checked the dashboard, so maybe that you have. How many quarantine cases do we have that are related to those seven positive cases?
I'm sorry, Ms. Crable, I did not get that data before I left the office.
Okay, yeah, Dr. Faust, do you think that you, or Josh?
So the answer is six, Ms. Crable, in quarantine.
Six quarantine with seven positives?
That's correct.
Okay. And would that be because somebody was vaccinated, probably, most likely? Don't know. Okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, all right, that's good. Thank you.
Vaccinated and masked, because remember, if they're masked, then the quarantine isn't, as, you know, it doesn't affect as many students. Okay. All right, additional questions? All right, if there are no additional questions, I'd like to ask, if possible, Ms. Turner and Mr. Howard, if you guys could stay on the call as we, as we continue to talk, just in case other things come up. But I would like to open it to board members, now that we have received some additional information. I would just like to open the floor to share some of your thoughts, or if there is a motion for, from anyone, we can go from there. So, do I see a hand? I see Ms. Justice's hand came up first. I think Mr. Wildabore put up a hand, so we'll go to Ms. Justice and Mr. Wildabore.
Yeah, I'm making a motion. I move that we keep the mask mandate at least through the holidays to January the first.
All right, so the motion is, and let me just make sure I'm clear, when you say the holidays, Ms. Justice, when are you looking to end that? Or when are you, what is, what's the date?
When we return from school in January. Regular schedule.
January sixth? So the motion
The sixth.
All right, so the motion is to continue with masks. Is, are you asking for any kind of revisit for metrics or anything, or are you just saying you want?
We're obviously going to have to revoke in December. I was making the motion, because I, from everything I'm hearing, that's, to me, what seems to be the logical sequence. But would I have to just say until our next board meeting, and then redo it until January the sixth? That's, I'm not sure about the procedures that, just due to the fact that we've got that mandate from the, on that mandate. That's that directive from the legislature that we have to vote on it, everybody.
So repeat your motion one more time for me.
My original motion was, is that we keep the mandate through January sixth, when we return from the holidays in the new year.
Okay, so we have a board meeting on the fourth, too, but, all right, so you're keep mandate through January sixth. Is there a second to that motion? Ms. Crable, is your hand up for? Or, sorry, I see Mr. McManus. Mr. McManus?
I have a question, if I may.
Before, before we do that, is there a second to Ms. Justice's motion? Okay, so if there is not a second, that motion
I'll second.
Okay, all right. Ms. Crable will second the motion to keep the mask mandate through January sixth. Now we will open it to discussion. So let's start with Mr. Wildabore was first, and then let's go to Mr. McManus, and then Ms. Crable.
Well, I think point of order is appropriate here. I don't think we can mandate, that we keep the mandate until the, until January. We have, we have a vote we have to take in December, so I think, at best, we can, so I, you know, I think that that nullifies that motion. It needs to be restated, or
Let's direct that to Colin. Mr. Shive, can you speak to that from a legal perspective?
I think you could, I guess, you know, the point, you could vote to say that, as of now, you intend to remove the mask mandate in January. You would have to vote on that again in December, and also on January fourth, or in the January meeting. But I guess that, you know, the purpose of that, such a vote, would be to signal to the community that you do intend to lift the mandate in January. But Mr. Wildabore is correct. You can't bind the board in the future, because you will have to revisit that in December.
So whatever decision, if the decision is made tonight, either way, we'd either have to affirm it or decline it at the December meeting, if we're looking at something for January, to be clear.
That's right.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, I said, after Mr. Wildabore, we're going to Mr. McManus for his comment, then Ms. Crable, then Mr. Bullier.
I think Colin answered my question. If that were going to pass, then I would say that we intend to begin school with the mask option.
Okay.
Even though we have to vote on it every month.
Right. All right, Ms. Crable.
Yeah, I just wanted a point of clarification before voting is that does this include, if we are mask optional, would that include visitors as well? And I didn't know if we had to vote on that separately, but I'm a little concerned that if we have kids and staff with no masks on, and we have visitors coming in without masks also, that's, yeah, I would like to, you know, see us have visitors have to be masked. Optional, so I didn't know if we had to include all that in a motion or not.
So if the board were to make that decision this evening, we could direct the superintendent to create a processes and procedures to be presented regarding going mask optional at the December meeting. Dr. Faust, would you, or would the administration be able to come forward with those specifics of what that would look like?
Yes, we would.
Okay, all right, great. So truly, what the board just has to figure out is, do we want to move forward with this motion? So let's go to Mr. Bullier for a comment, then Ms. Justice, and then I saw Ms. Crable's hand up again. Okay, so let's go to Mr. Bullier first, please.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Again, to Mr. Wildabore's point, we can't really, I don't think we can say we're going to go until January and then have some sort of shadow vote. I think it's really important not to put any endpoint on any of this. Because we just heard experts say, hey, the numbers could go up. We certainly anticipate that that could happen over the holidays. And so every time you do this, you know, to people and say, well, here's the endpoint, here's the endpoint, here's the endpoint, you create a lot of frustration around false expectations. But I guess that would be my first point. But my second point is, I think we have an obligation, not just to look at data, although I will add that, as far as I'm concerned, the data really supports getting rid of the mask mandate for New Hanover County schools. That's what it supports. But we also have to take inventory. It's not just about, you know, there's a rigidity to, we're protecting lives, we're protecting lives. I think we have to look a little bit deeper. There's stuff that we simply can't quantify when it comes to the effect that this has on our students. Because there are too many variables to measure whether or not it's having an impact. And I'm afraid that what we have done, not only as a community, but as a society, is we have taken concerns that are parental, legitimate concerns, and just thrown them into a box of, you know, concerns that are political. And they're not. And I just feel like we have reached a point with such low risk to our students that there is a cost to this level of precaution. I think it's serious. And I really urge every board member to take a minute and think about that, and just realize that the concerns that you're hearing from, we had six people show up in yellow shirts, but we had six hundred parents show up, and they were legitimately concerned. And I feel like we do need, as a board, to give a little bit of space to those people and say, we hear you. We are not just ignoring this. And I just worry that, you know, these, these quick motions, this, I will look at it in February or January. I don't think that's the right way. Either vote to keep the mandate in place for the time being, until November, December, or, you know, stop putting these false dates in people's minds. It's a poison.
All right, Ms. Justice?
Obviously, we are, all are allowed to disagree. I think that, this is my personal opinion, that was a political statement in itself. Non-being political here, I'm sticking to the science. And you did have one good point, though, and that is the fact that it looks like legally, we are going to have to vote on it again. So I would like to amend my motion and amend it to December the fourth meeting, to keep the mask mandate in place until then. So I'm amending my motion. I think that's how you do it correctly. Correct, Colin?
So, go ahead, Colin, if you want to speak to that.
I think, honestly, procedurally, it'd probably be easier to just vote on the motion that's on the table. And then, if that, if that fails, then Ms. Justice can make her motion to, you know, leave the mask mandate in place until December.
Could I withdraw my motion? Would that make it even easier, and then if I want to state another motion?
Sure.
Okay, I would like to withdraw my motion and state another motion. I would like to leave, okay, I would like to leave the mask mandate in place until December the fourth.
All right, so you would like to maintain the mask mandate in New Hanover County schools through, until the December regular meeting? And that is, what date is that? The seventh?
Oh, the seventh, I'm sorry. The seventh, then. That's the date of our next meeting.
Okay, is there a second for that motion? If there is no second to that motion, then, oh, sorry, is there a hand? I don't believe
I would like to second that, Ms. Adams.
All right, Ms. Walker would like to second that, and I believe, Ms. Walker, you had your hand up for comment also, so let's go to you, and then for discussion, and Ms. Crable.
I would hate to jump somebody else. I know mine went up much later than everyone else's, so.
Ms. Crable first, then? All right, thank you, Ms. Crable.
Yeah, the only thing that I, I wanted to go back to this quarantine thing, because one of my, one of the reasons that I voted, or the main reason I voted for masks in the first place, in August, out in front of the Health Department, was because I was trying to protect student instruction time. And the quarantining rules seem to be kind of strict. And we were, had the possibility of sending a lot of kids out of school. And granted, there are some quarantines right now that students have that, from exposures outside of school. So some of the quarantines aren't even related to our positive cases, so we kind of have to, you know, keep that in mind. But, you know, everybody knows that the only place kids, now, I shouldn't say that, let me rephrase. It, it's, it's kind of a common knowledge thing that the only place kids are wearing masks, for the most part, is in school. Because they're, they're going to parties and sleepovers and doing all that kind of stuff outside of school anyway, but we can't control that. But what we can control is our kids sitting next to each other in a classroom with a mask on or without a mask on, and we can control the people that come into our schools with the mask on or without a mask on. So I just wanted us, as Nelson was imploring people to think about what the right thing to do was, I wanted us to think about that, because that is what we're all about, is protecting all twenty-six thousand students and four thousand employees that the and sometimes, personal choice has to be trumped for the, for the good of the whole. And so that's all that I wanted to say, as we're talking about imploring people to think about the right thing.
All right, I believe then we will come back to Ms. Walker. You are on mute, Ms. Walker.
Sorry about that. I didn't want to jump everybody else that had opinions, too. I want to echo as well. I feel like, you know, everyone's tired of dealing with COVID and masks. I understand that. But I feel like the only way we've been able to get our students in school and to stay in school is by masking. Rules that we have, to Ms. Crable's point, they're pretty strict. And, you know, if we just start taking off masks, then we don't know, we don't know how it's going to affect the learning, you know, learning of the children. And I, and I feel like it's going to affect parents, too, because if, you know, if they're out for quarantine reasons, you know, you're going to have childcare and things like that. I, I know we've had the discussion, and the motion was withdrawn for January. I think all the indicators that I'm looking at, including the vaccines that are rolling out, you know, our top doctor here in the hospital, the collaborative, they talk about us just, you know, holding on to the holidays are over. It gives time for all that medication to come out, you know, the ones that they were just talking about. Mr. Howard was talking about, but also the vaccines. Um, Mr. Howard was talking about, but also the vaccines to be finished. Um, and also, you know, i- i- it would just give us a time. And, and I don't, I hate, um, when we're bringing up politics, because I don't feel like, oh, most of us anyway, look at this as a political move. I know for me, I think, I think really hard about the safety of, of kids. And if it's not just that, it's the learning loss. And I, if it wasn't for masks, then we wouldn't even be, I mean, our kids wouldn't even be in school as much as they, you know, because what was, the alternative is, you know, a virtual, nobody wants that. I think nobody, no matter who you are, wants that. So, you know, I have to take Ms. Crable's point about the quarantine issue. I'm really nervous about that. If we start unmasking, and, and especially when we mix over the holidays, you know, borders are open now, and everyone's visiting each other. And I just think, I worry about surge. And if we can just safely get past that, even though we're not voting on, um, you know, uh, removing the mask January, you know, till January 7th, and we have to vote every month, I just feel like, you know, it just makes a lot of sense to just wait until the new year after the holidays. So that's my opinion on that. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Walker. I believe we were going to Mr. Wildebor next, and then I see, Ms. Justice, is your hand still up for a comment? Yes. And then, uh, Mr. Bowyer and Ms. Crable, is your hand up for comment? All right, so we'll go Mr. Wildebor, Ms. Justice, Mr. Bowyer, Ms. Crable.
Well, I just have to say that I am rather disappointed in my colleagues. Um, we look at Brunswick County, we look at Pender County, they haven't had surges, but we're all, we're very worried about surges. Well, we can be worried forever. Um, you know, and, and I know we have one person that tells me every time, oh, you're the one that talks about God. Well, God didn't give us a spirit of fear. And we're all, oh, we're afraid this might happen. Um, you know, I'd like to see the metrics on how many students have died from the flu. We could look at any of those kind of things. If masks work, if, and there's, that's a huge if, uh, even our own experts said, you know, maybe 20% effective. So, we're doing that. Parents will have the choice. I think we're, we're losing that whole, that whole concept here. If I want to mask my child, then I can mask my child. We're not saying that no masks in school. We're saying simply that we, we're not, we, as a board, are not medical doctors. We're not being told that we have the right to say to you, you have to do this, or you have to do that. That's not our role. We're not medical doctors. We need to give parents the choice. Um, if they want to wear a mask, wonderful. Uh, in, in the emails that we've received, uh, and just over this weekend, 59 that I received, I'll say that I received, 59 said, please, 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 stop the masking. For those that, um, were former educators, um, talk to a kindergarten teacher and talk to a first grade teacher and say, how can you work with a child on the formation of letters and the formation of sounds through a mask? So we are robbing our students. We're robbing our students each and every day. Brunswick County, Pender County are both saying education is what we need to do. We need to be educators, not medical doctors. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wildebor, Ms. Justice. You're on mute again, Ms. Justice.
I would never say I'm a medical doctor. I would say, though, that I have enough ability in, in this world to know that experts like, um, the Health Department are, they are the experts. And the majority of the studies show the masks are effective to a certain extent. We don't know yet what the long-term effects of this illness are. I've still got problems three months after I took it. I've developed asthma from this. I never had that in my life. This is just me, one person. The variant is a lot more powerful than the other. Uh, even, even if it's a couple kids to get it, we don't want any children to get it as far as being able to spread it. Obviously, we're doing better in this county than we are in Pender and Brunswick because we had had the mandatory mask. So that too, is, does not necessarily hold water. Uh, what we need to do is not have it political. Sorry about my dog. I totally agree about this. This shouldn't be political. And I'm hearing way too much politics through the whole pandemic. It's time for us to stick with the science, take care of our kids, keep them safe. The safest place for our children right now is in school with the mask. I'm, you know, the first graders and second graders, in fact, it goes all through the grades. We need to be see, able to see and communicate, get the letters. But if we do the right thing, we can get over this sooner. And that's what we need to keep doing. The reason that we're still in this is because people were not doing the right thing for way too long. And that's why this is way drawn out. This is why this variant went crazy in this country, and in fact, all over the world. We need to do what the science says, so our kids can get back to a really normal, uh, school situation as soon as possible. Of course, this is my opinion, but I think we all, I think various ones of us in here are aware of the fact, that what I'm saying is pretty much darn true.
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Bowyer, and then to Ms. Crable. And Ms. Walker, is your hand up to speak again, or is it just left over from the last comment?
No, it went back up. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, Ms. Crable and then, oh, sorry, Mr. Bowyer, Ms. Crable, Ms. Walker. And I, I'd like to say a few things as well.
Uh, yeah, so just, just really quickly, when we say, oh, we need to keep politics out of it, I believe science, you know, I believe that I'm, you know, I'm here to protect kids. Implicit in that is that because your opinion and my opinion differ, is that I'm not here for children. And that is inherently political. That you think, or one person says, oh, well, man, I'm just here to follow science and take care of kids. If you can't see that, that means you don't care about kids. We have replaced the word, I'm here for, the phrase, I'm here for children, with the phrase, I'm here for God. In that, any endeavor to do something on behalf of children, whether anybody else agrees or not, is inherently right and virtuous. Everybody here, and I have never questioned this, and I never will, and I say it publicly all the time, everybody here is doing the best thing that they can for kids. Everybody here is following what they think the science dictates of them. It's not a simple, this looks safer, we're gonna do it. There are downsides. There are legitimate downsides that have nothing to do with anything except what our parents are telling us are happening to their kids. And that's all this is about. So no, it is absolutely not political until you say, or until anybody says, I'm here for children. Good luck.
All right. Net, thank you, Mr. Bowyer, Ms. Crable. Comments about the masking or COVID quarantines or anything along that topic?
Um, yes, ma'am. Um, all I wanted to do, um, I, I sent you each a, um, a summary of the top 12 schools, um, by enrollment in our, in our state. And as of today, 85 schools were still mask mandatory, and 13 of those were mask optional. One of the district, districts that was mask optional has a split, um, where their elementary schools are mask mandatory, and their secondary schools are mask optional. I just wanted to throw that out. Um, and th- these are the schools that are more like us in demographics and, um, population density. And so some of our, um, some of our neighbors don't have as dense populations that we have. So I just wanted to throw that out as just case in point, um, for, um, factual consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Crable, Ms. Walker, and then I'm going to jump in after Ms. Walker.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say, we're in unusual times. This is a honey year pandemic. We're talking about um, severe illness and death in some cases. And I know right now our metrics are low, and I'm very thankful for that. Um, I, I just, um, want to point out, I know I'm not an expert, and I don't ever claim to be that I'm an expert, but we have been put here in an unusual place where people have trusted us, you know, to make honest, you know, judgments about what to do. And I think that's what we're all doing. Um, you know, so they're super tough decisions. Um, and I just want to say that a lot, most of us here are in favor of making masks optional. We just have to vote every month on it. And I know most of us probably want, you know, once the holidays are over, are, are, are for that. So, you know, I don't think it's so cut and dry, and I don't think we need to start pointing fingers at each other. I think for, um, you know, for the whole political discussion, I just feel like sometimes, you know, that does get in the mix of things. And I don't, I don't think most of us want to be accused of doing that. I think we're all are trying to do our best. So I just wanted to say, even though we're not experts, we are here to put in this place to make these decisions. And, um, I think we all really want to make the best decision. So, that's all I have to say. Go ahead, Sol.
All right, thank you, Ms. Walker, Mr. McManus. You can go after, after me, and then I believe Mr. Wildebor has another comment. Um, I want to pull from some data, um, it, to follow up with what Ms. Crable said. Um, I looked at the numbers today on the tracking sheet for the state, and we have 115 school districts in North Carolina. Of those 115 districts, 32 of them have gone mask optional. That's 28%. The CDC still recommends masking in schools. The North Carolina Save for Schools Toolkit still recommends masking in schools. We have all seen some of the medical perfection, professionals that are highly regarded and respected in our community that were not happy with the decision of the mandate being lifted in the county. The bottom line is ma- vaccines are now available for five to 11-year-olds. I can say as a parent, I think that's fantastic, and I want my child to have that opportunity before masks are optional within our schools. And I am not alone with that. For as many parents as we have heard that want masks to be optional, we have heard from a lot of parents that want, can we just wait until my child can get vaccinated? We listen to all the voices. We do not listen to factions. We listen to the voices of 26,000 students and all of the families that go along with that. We have to be respectful for all of that. And I will be very honest with you. I have read every single email that has come through, and I know that people are tired of masks. I am thrilled that our numbers are so low. I looked at the numbers statewide. I believe we're number six in the state for lowest COVID positivity rate. You know why? Because we've been masking, we've been vaccinating, and we're doing what we need to do. So what I am encouraging, let's keep doing what we've been doing. Let's keep vaccinating. Let's get through the holiday. I am comfortable going to mask optional after the holidays, when kids come back in in January. If our metrics stay low, if we stay under 5%, I am 100% comfortable saying to families that will now have had seven or eight weeks to get their child vaccinated, of those that want to, to then come back in after the holiday and say, okay, here we are. So that's where I stand with this, and I did just want to share that with you. Um, you know, I, I'm uncomfortable being part of the 30%, the less than 30% of districts in the state that are making a move to remove masks. I think that we need to keep doing what we're doing to keep our kids safe. And to Ms. Crable's point and what we've talked about, we cannot forget about quarantines. When students are exposed now, when there are not masks, your children are coming home. They will be in your house for a week, again. And you may not be happy with the instructional services that you feel are being provided during that time. We want our kids in school. We know that's where they learn best. And between now and the end of the year, our high school students are taking EOCs. I do not want any kids quarantined between now and the holiday break, the winter break. There, this is a very important time for these students between Thanksgiving and the winter break. They need to be in school. They need to be with their teachers. So that is my piece. Um, I will pass it on. I believe we are going back to, did I say Mr. McManus? And then we will go to Mr. Wildebor.
I apologize. You want me now? You want me now? I apologize. Okay, thank you. Obviously, understatement that this whole thing is intensified. It is absolutely out of bounds for all of us. We have 16 days, I think I'm correct, left at this school semester. Can we not compromise, quit attacking each other, do what's best for all? If we need to stay with the mask for 16 days, it's worth it if we all agree we're going optional in January. And I think that suits everybody. Not that we vote to suit anyone. We vote our conscience. I think our consciences are clear. We want to go to optional. I agree with that wholeheartedly. 16 days is not going to break any of it. But that's 16 days for those to get vaccinated, and after 16, and after the end of the semester, I just feel like I can't be responsible for those who didn't, for making the decision, for those who didn't get vaccinated.
Thank you, Mr. McManus and Mr. Wildebor.
Well, first off, um, it, it takes a lot to get me fired up, and I'm fired up right now. Um, and I'm going to be honest about that. Um, my, my question to, to our board is, why did we not take this vote on Tuesday? If we were, if we really didn't really care what, what came out of the meeting on Friday, then what was, what was the premise? Why do we delay the, till today? It makes no sense. Why didn't we take the vote then if, if everybody's mind was already made up? Because obviously, that vote had no bearing on, on anybody else's vote. So, um, you know, I, I just, I just feel horrible for our kindergarten, first grade students that are, are losing the opportunity, our speech students that are losing the opportunity to get a first-rate, uh, education, uh, because they can't see those, those letters. So, I'm, I'm very disappointed, but, uh, of course, we'll go with the will of the board.
Mr. Wildebor, I'll respond to that, that comment about why we did need to know what, what the HHS board was going to decide, because if we had voted any, the, the other way to go optional, and they had voted to not, then it would have been a moot point. And so we, we needed to know what their decision was before we could make any decisions about what we felt was best. And, and, and frankly, you know, I looked at, um, some of the comments that came out after that vote um, from people that were a part of it. And, and that was an important part of the conversation as well, was the response and the reaction, um, you know, from the medical community, um, and what they had to say with that vote. Uh, and again, our responsibility is to our school buildings, uh, you know, and, and so to our students, and we respect what the county and HHS has, has decided. But these are our buildings that we're responsible for, and, and our students. And so we have to make a decision as this board. Um, and yes, that had to be a consideration, what they were doing, because it could have taken it out of our hands completely, and we needed to know that. Uh, if, you know, if, if that was going to be the case. Uh, and I do just want to say, you know, this board voted to put masks into place before the Health and Human Services Board put a countywide mandate into place. And I just want to say that because there seemed to be some confusion within the public that they dictated what we do. We actually moved ahead of them to protect our students in August. Um, and so the decision, it's, it matters what our HHS, um, you know, partners are doing, and we want to know the data, and we appreciate that the Health Department is here to share that data. Uh, but at the end of the day, this rests on our shoulders for our kids. Um, so, all right, um, I believe the motion on the table, um, is to maintain the mask mandate in New Hanover County schools until the December board meeting, uh, which is December 7th. Um, there is a first and a second for that. Is there any additional discussion? I see, Mr. Bowyer, you've got a hand up. Uh, you may, go ahead.
Uh, y- yeah, um, just two quick things. Hey, I do want to, uh, say to my fellow board members, I appreciate the dialogue. Um, I, I get fired up. I'm a passionate guy. Um, I just don't like the insinuation that it's as simple as do what's best for children. Uh, the other thing I did want to briefly bring up is sports, and I know there was some conversation, uh, in the background about that. Um, and I don't know if Mr. Shive could speak to this. Uh, it's my understanding that if our mask mandate is maintained, that even during away matches to Pender and Brunswick County, our athletes will have to continue to mask. That is a huge competitive disadvantage. I challenge anybody to put one of those things on, as I have, and go to the gym for, you know, even 10 minutes. It, it does make a difference. So, Mr. Shive or, or Madam Chair, can somebody speak to, to the impact on our athletes, uh, if we maintain that without making some adjustment?
I'd have to ask the administration about that. I don't know the High School Athletic Association rules with respect to the competition um, in other counties. I don't know if we have anybody here that can speak to that.
We would have to find that out through contacting NCHSA.
Dr. Faust, can we ask that that, um, information be shared with the board? Um, because if we're, I think that that's, that, that is a sticking point. It is just, just understand what are the ramifications for our athletes? If we are staying mandated for now, what does that mean for competition between now and whenever we go optional? Um, because I, I, you know, if we are traveling between local counties, and I, I mean, there's plenty of other counties that are not optional. And so what are the ramifications if they're in, you know, if they're within an athletic event somewhere else? I think that would, if we could find that out, that would be great.
Okay, all right, we'll do that.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Bowyer, your hand is still up. Is that another question, or you're good? Okay, all right. So, the motion on the table is to maintain the mask mandate in New Hanover County schools until December 7th, where we will vote again. Uh, there's a first and a second. Any further discussion? All right, uh, Ms. Bowie, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
No.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Crable?
You're muted.
Ms. Crable, you were muted. Sorry, we didn't hear you.
Aye.
Mr. McManus?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebor?
No.
All right, motion passes five to two. Uh, thank you very much, uh, members of the board. And, and to the, to the public that's watching, you know, please understand, this is a really difficult discussion. And we hear you. We are reading every message. We, we see the emails. We know how you feel. But under- But understand that when you are sending us those emails, there are a lot of other emails that are saying other things. All right, and we are trying to take in all of those messages, all of those feelings, balancing it with the data, balancing it with how do we get kids to get the best instructional time between now and the end of the year? Um, you know, please, we ask for grace during this time. Um, this is not easy to sit in this seat. Um, and so I thank my board members for the research I know that you all have been putting in on the backend to figure out what options we have and, and what would work for our district. Um, thank you to the Health Department for being here today, Mr. Howard and Ms. Turner, uh, for answering our questions, and we look forward to continued conversations and, and support as, as we move into our December meeting. Hopefully, we can have you guys back and see that the numbers are staying where they are, and, uh, hopefully, hopefully those vaccination rates for our five to 11-year-olds are going to go up, and we'll continue to see positive progression, um, in our county. Um, Ms. Crable, did you have a hand up before we went to the next item on the agenda? Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, just a, a, an ask for, um, Dr. Faust and his team that, um, that we enforce this kind, that rules uniformly across all schools on visitors being allowed in or not being allowed in. Um, visitors or parents being asked about vaccination status. Um, just to make sure that all of our schools are, um, all of our principals are all on the same page, following the, the same guidelines. I think our school system should, um, put up a unified front as we're doing this.
All right, and we look forward, uh, Dr. Faust, at the December meeting to hear about, um, some of the options for going optional, uh, potentially in January, returning back from winter break. Okay, um, I do not have the agenda posted in front of me right now. Thank you, Ms. Bowie, you are the best. I see you moving towards it for me. All right, the final, uh, item on our agenda is adjournment. Uh, is there a motion?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Bowyer.
Thank you, Mr. Bowyer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McManus. Any other discussion? All right, Ms. Bowie, if you could please call the roll?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Crable?
Ms. Crable, you are muted again.
Guys, tell me I talk too much. All right, I'm unmuted. Yes.
Do, but I love you.
Yes.
And Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildabore?
Aye.
All right, motion passes seven to zero. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening, and we will see you soon. Bye-bye.
Thank you.